Yes.
Ms. Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion is approved, thank you. The next is the amendment to board electronic participation procedures. David, I think this is your item? It's my ender-
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I am moving to amend section two, number one of the policy, which calls for seven members to be physically present at the meeting. And my motion is to decrease that number of seven to five members being present. And I'm not proposing that we change the quorum at all. However, our business is really important and I want to be sure that by rolling from seven to five that we have enough members to carry out our business and not take the chance of missing some important business. So again, my motion is to amend section two, number one, from seven board members to five members needed to be physically present at any particular meeting.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? I just have one clarifying point, David. So, as the Chair, I'm just a little worried that we're going down to five. I've actually always been a proponent of having six, having at least a quorum here. But I'm a little worried that if we have five here and the person on the phone drops off, then we won't have a quorum.
My response to that is that if the person drops off on the phone then, you're correct, we wouldn't have a quorum and then they're having to quorum procedures kick in.
Which if they leave during the meeting because it goes on too long, that could happen too.
I'm worried about continuing business if we don't have a quorum here. So-
If we don't have a quorum, we can't continue business anyway. If someone was sitting there physically and had another meeting or had an emergency, they would leave then you wouldn't have a quorum. So I don't see that keeping it at five instead of seven creates any unnecessary complications.
I'd like to call the question.
Go ahead and call, roll.
Mr. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Elsner?
Yes.
Dr. Freitas?
Yes.
Mr. Hendry?
Yes.
Ms. Neal?
I'm kind of torn. I didn't ask these questions, anybody know what other boards have? Is that, as long as it's a quorum?
It's becoming more and more customary-
Okay.
They just make their own.
Dr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Yes. Next item is the standards resource guides. Danielle Shaki, Deputy Superintendent. And... Mr. Guffin? Mr. Guffin? I think it would probably be appropriate if you wished to read Sarah O'Brien's statement now because it does have to do with our resources.
Statement of Sarah O'Brien, June 23, 2014, special meeting. Good afternoon. I apologize for being unable to attend today's special meeting, but I unfortunately had a previously scheduled obligation. I felt it necessary to send a comment regarding the important issue of stakeholder support's matching curriculum and resources to the newly adopted college and career-ready standards. As you will recall, I made a specific resolution back in March to ensure that with the new standards adoption, our teachers across the state would have access to materials required for full implementation of current standards. When I asked about this again in May, I was informed that the department had misunderstood the request and that they would be following up with these calls now that they had clarification on the matter. Just this last week, I received a follow-up from Amy Horton stating that an email had been sent by Danielle Shaki to textbook vendors informing them of the newly adopted standards and commenting that supplemental tools would be helpful for local corporations. Part of the amended waiver being discussed today specifically states that the department is working with textbook publishers to ensure resources and supplements will be provided for teachers specifically aligned with the new standards. With all due respect, I am not satisfied that a casual email forwarded out to vendors satisfies the request made or approach warranted to be sure that schools are able to match curriculum to standards. It has been a month since the email was sent and I am told that there has been no vendor response to date. I am discouraged by the approach taken as well as the follow-up from the department on this important issue, both as a matter of waiver compliance and educator support. I am hopeful that the department will be willing to take a more proactive approach in gaining these important tools so that schools are able to utilize them as necessary to fill in academic gaps. We are running out of time in preparation for the 2014-15 standards implementation and need to be acting quickly on the matter. I look forward to continued discussion and am happy to help in any way that I can. Sarah O'Brien.
All right, Danielle, would you like to address the topic?
I would only partly listen because I was working on this. I would love to read it and certainly respond to Ms. O'Brien. I think I did hear when she said, I think I heard her say something like, "Oh, that maybe a memo wasn't strong enough." And I guess my comment would be, it's not very often a state superintendent writes a memo imploring anybody to do anything to support. And it wasn't just a simple memo, it was actually a memo plus all the correlation documents offering the department's assistance for any textbook company that wanted to make any changes. So we could follow up with a phone call, but the thing is, what we have from the Indiana Publishers Association in most cases is an email contact and address. So to find phone numbers for those same folks here may not be easy. But again, so I guess I would suggest that reaching out to them in a memo directly from the vendor Ritz saying, "Please help our corporations where you have materials," is more than just simplistic as maybe Sarah is implying.
So-
And we brought it forth to this body and there was, you know, I mean, I know this is Sarah's project, but we said this is going to be our strategy. We gave you the memo, the list of all the vendors it was sent to, which is pretty exhaustive. And because they haven't reached out to us, doesn't mean they're not doing something with the person locally they've adapted with. It was just if you needed our assistance in doing that work, please let us know.
Brad?
I want to make a comment, and I'm not going to try and attempt for Sarah, but I think, I feel pretty safe she would say a few of these things if she was here. I'd like to see a copy of what actually went out to the textbook providers, and I actually disagree with you in your assessment because having done textbook adoption for many years in the state of Indiana, I think part of what she was trying to get after was was a proactive door opening to those vendors to come in and basically walk them through what has shifted, what has changed-
And we did that.
And give them time, okay, that's fine. But I think what she's saying beyond that is a proactive, being as proactive as we can and making sure that they're moving forward. I don't think she was just simply saying, "Send a letter out." I think she's looking for direct follow-up on that. So I don't know because I haven't seen the letter.
We gave it to you the last board meeting?
We've- I'll go back and look at it, but I'm just saying-
Oh, it's in the packet now too.
If you would take some time to talk to her, I think it's more than what she's looking for is more than a memo.
Sure, Andrea?
I have a question. How likely is it that the reason textbook publishers have not responded is because they don't deem the changes substantial enough to merit the creation of supplemental or additional materials?
That could be, and many of the vendors that people have chosen now are not necessarily textbook vendors. Remember that we don't have, we're not operating now under the same law regulations that Brad was referring to, I don't think. And they buy resource materials. So they have a variety, that's why the list was so exhaustive that we sent out in the first place because many of them are not textbook companies. And so we sent out the letter and with it, Andrea, we sent out the entire correlation document so that they could actually see where it is that there might be gaps within their materials. I don't know where to go from here. We don't have, we don't convene a textbook group anymore at the state level to determine textbooks for anybody. That's been opened up for the locals to choose their materials. And so we did get the list and we did send out, you know, an actual letter with the documents from me requesting that they get with the school corporations. But Andrea, in your case, that may be true, that their actual materials didn't warrant something new. And that could be the case in many of the vendors that were actually on the list. Troy?
I know that after the 28th when we did, because we were in the process of textbook adoption for English and Language Arts, I did send a note to the vendor and I know with the timeline, it may be just a little tight for them to respond. So, you know, I think vendors are working on it and with the aid of the correlation, I think that they're able to maybe come back with an answer at a little later time. But I don't think it's going to be before the start of school.
And what I could do as a follow-up, I could put something in the DOE dialogue, Troy, and tell me if you think this is a good idea, asking principals and superintendents if they've received some follow-up from textbook companies. At least then we could start to get a gauge because they'll be contacting them directly. The chances of them calling the department for that is not very likely because they know who they're doing business with in the state of Indiana regarding their vendors. So I certainly, we can certainly try to do some follow-up that way to see if we've had some contact from the actual textbook vendors.
I haven't yet.
Yeah, but see, you reached out on your own, so wanting to know.
Where'd you find our phone number?
I just called our rep.
Yeah, they have their own individual rep people and sure, they do.
So there was no response whatsoever?
Not yet, no. But again, the question we asked was if you would like-
And they got it about a month ago.
It wasn't, are you going to do something else? If you would like our help and assisting as you reach out to your locals to determine this, please let us know. So it doesn't mean ready to come tell us if they were, because again, the corporation I was in, we adopted curriculum materials and no textbooks, for example. So-
In mathematics, right.
That vendor may not need to make any changes. And they wouldn't reach out to us, they certainly wouldn't reach out to the department.
So I understand her frustration. It was a whole different thing. This actually did happen when we went to Common Core because all the vendors were changing over to college and career-ready standards. That's not the case now. The case now is they have college and career-ready books and things out and so it's a matter of, does there need to be some changes?
Well, I appreciate your point, Andrea, and thank you for that explanation, Superintendent. I would just reiterate that there's a member of the board who-
Sure.
Is taking this very seriously, so I would just encourage the department to follow up appropriately.
Well, we'll try and see if we can follow up from the actual superintendents and principals and see if we've got, and actually, I'll reach out to her superintendent to see if their vendors have actually contacted as well. Thank you. All right, Danielle?
All right. I think many of you were in the room during the roundtable, so I don't want, I certainly don't start afresh. But we're here today because from the roundtable meeting in April, there was by Kevin Brenninger, a resolution for resource materials to be brought forth before the roundtable and then to you before publication to teachers by July 1st. So today at the roundtable, we presented to them the resource materials and that reminds you, this isn't exhaustive of all resource materials, but it was very specific to four elements of resources for teachers. It was sample math problems, modeling context and process. It was a reading list. It was samples of grade level text complexity and it was inclusion of nonfiction texts and what was the guidance to the field and the inclusion of nonfiction texts in their instruction. So the materials we were able to present and covered all of those. You've received most of them quite some time ago. Received some updated math ones because we've received great feedback from the field. Some teachers we've reached out to to say, "How can we make these better?" And they're already working with us, so we did send some new updated math ones. And then honestly, from state board members and some roundtable members, we continue to get updates for ideas for our reading list. So you do have it for you and not at last minute, but rather at every possible minute to make this list as good as possible, a new Indiana reading list. I thanked Andrea privately, but I want to thank her publicly for a lot of great ideas that she sent to us and they're now reflected in our reading list.
Good-looking list.
You're welcome.
It's a good-looking list.
So what I'm showing you here, I'm using the website. This is actually the Department of Education's demo website. So once you receive this information today and you've gone to appropriate, the field is anxiously awaiting this site to go live. So what we have done since the adoption of standards are a couple of things. So first of all, we did want to give thought to the fact we want no educator or parent to have to do more than three clicks to find resource materials for standards for English, language arts, math, science, or social studies. So we have reorganized everything on our DOE website. So if you want to find something in standards and you typed in standards or you linked on the first page under parents' standards or just trending now standards, it would take you to this page. Once you got to the standards page, you could pick any standard, whether it's a career and tech ed pathway or whether in this case it's English, language arts, or math. So I'm going to go up to English, language arts. The site here is links for literacy. There are links for whether you're an educator, a parent, or community member to get resources. The very first thing you find are just the standards. So you can look up your student's grade level and standards. Below that, and this was actually given out to the field soon after the standards adoption, as quickly as we were able to create it, which was the correlation guides. And this is what we sent to the assessment vendors. As a teacher, this is what was most important to me and what I've been waiting for the most. So as a fourth grade teacher, I know- Indiana academic standards of old and newly adopted standards and in the final column, where something has changed. So for example, this one right here, standard four, point RF, point four-two, is using the six major syllable patterns in reading unknown words. This is a completely new standard. So as a fourth grade teacher, I need to know that. So this document is really what's guiding my curriculum planning over the summer if I would be back in math division. Under the correlation documents by grade level, the first link under educators is the educator toolkit for K-12 reading selections. This is where you will find two of the items that were from the roundtable resolution. This is where you'll find the text complexity rubric, samples of text complexity, directions for educators on how to use the complexity rubric in their classroom as they look at reading materials that they want to include in their curriculum and instruction, as well as the inclusion of nonfiction text. So all of that is under the educator toolkit. Then there's also not necessarily a part of the resolution, but of course, important materials for the field. There's glossaries for all the terms in the English, language arts standards. Here's where you'll find the reading list that you have before you in print. Here's where you'll find, again, if you're an educator, the Hoosier Family and Readers Initiative is very important to our classroom teachers and their partners. You will also find here online communities of practice. You'll find this both on our math site and our ELA site. We do want to bring teachers together across the state and our e-learning division is going to present to you in a coming, I believe in August, about this best practice and really how educators are communicating with one another. I was asked during the roundtable meeting, how many times in the coming months are we actually presenting to the field on these resources and the new standards? And I actually got some information since the roundtable meeting. We are conducting 26 face-to-face teacher trainings this summer, 19 of them through e-learning, seven of them through our second language learner teachers. We are also presenting an ISTA, ISBA, IUSA, IPEA, and we are also getting more and more invitations to present. So what our college and career team has in presentation format is, one, these resources, the correlation documents, and I would say professional development for our teachers to understand all these changes. In addition to those 26 that are already planned for the summer months, we have 10 regional PD sessions starting in the fall. I know Dr. or Mr. Elsner asked earlier, you know, that's part of the waiver and it's important and it's not just important to talk about what we're going to do, but what we are doing. We are doing it and we also are planning a whole lot more. You will find a link here to Learning Connection where resources still exist. Learning Connection, I can just tell you, is being cleaned up and things where appropriate are being brought into this site. So again, you have one hub for everything you need in terms of resources. And then again, you'll see the link for parents. And anything that's black are areas from which we are still growing our resource materials and then for community members. Down here are the resources and development. These are the things the team are still working on and hope to get out here in the very soon, weeks to months. And the very first one is the assessment blueprint. I heard from our assessment director today at the roundtable meeting. They hope to finalize that internally within a week and get that out to the field next. So again, if I'm a teacher, my correlation document is already in my hand and within a week, I'm going to have my assessment blueprint so I know what is being tested at the grade level for which I teach. We are also working on differentiated resources. So those are resources to support our teachers of special needs students and our second language learning and our high ability students. And that is based on feedback that we received when we did the survey for what was really important. So once we met the resolution deadline of July 1st, what else did the field hope to see? And that's one of the top resources they asked for. We're also working on a lesson plan alignment tool, Alexa level information for grade level teachers, model content frameworks, and sample rubrics and exemplar writing that align to the writing standards for language arts. Those are everything ELA.
So Andrea, I want to ask you a question, if you don't mind. So we're going to go back through the list that you have right here and indicate which ones are Indiana authors, okay? And in addition, you worked closely with someone that you knew at the Indiana history.
Yes.
So, yes, so is this list that you provided something that they have on their website that we could link to as part of our resources?
No, we created that list last week.
Could they link it?
But I asked them, "What might you want to do with this list should it not completely become a state document?" And I, and they were, I think, very interested in producing maybe a bicentennial reading list or something of the sort-
Oh, that would be fun.
And creating a document that looked similar, perhaps adding adult titles.
Okay, and we would love to, if they could, they could keep the K-12 separate from the adult perhaps, that would be great to actually link to-
That would be great.
And they could have access to that.
I will report back to them tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Nice connection.
I really appreciated the effort that was made to expand the list to add more Hoosier authors and more subgenres.
And I would add, Superintendent, that would fit really well in that educators toolkit because we worked with the public library system-
Yes.
For some of their really good resource lists, I think it would fit there really well. So math is designed much the same way. The math standards, the math correlation guides, the math resource guides. The math resource guides, I think, are pretty tremendous and probably well beyond anything we've ever done with math standards in the past. So again, you guys have seen these, they've been evolving. Steve Baker with the Printers Association has been getting more feedback to us. We've been meeting with math educators. But what you find here, first of all, on every cover page, there are links to general good websites for mathematics instruction. And then when you go into the grade level, and I wish I could make, I'm trying to make this as big as I possibly can. By column, what you see is you see, this is fifth grade, you see the standard and then you see any vocabulary within that standard that is also separately linked in our glossary document. But if there's terms that need to be defined, a teacher can just go right here, find their standard, what are the important terms to be taught? What is an example, a visual example, teaching this mathematics concept? And then a link to websites and/or materials, Blackline Masters, lesson plan ideas, also linked to that standard.
And those will, those will help immensely if textbook people, you know, vendors don't necessarily come and present something on a particular topic.
Also in mathematics is the vertical articulation. So again, what is being taught, the grade level before me, the grade level after me, that exists in the math resource page. Down here, we have separately linked out, like I mentioned, of ELA glossary vocabulary. Again, online communities of practice, which will be monitored by the Department of Education staff and even fed by in some cases. If there's good reading materials or so forth, we'd like to put out for others to see. And then still in development, just like I mentioned, in ELA is the assessment blueprint, which will be next. Then the differentiated resources, the lesson plan, and the curriculum frameworks.
Quick question.
Also parents and communities.
Brad?
How we hope to rule this out to the field and with your approval as quickly as possible.
Thanks. Danielle, one of the strengths of the adoption process was the involvement of higher ed. How has the department re-engaged them? Because I think one of the things they bring to the table, particularly around the content knowledge, is really making sure particularly, when we're talking about terminology, taxonomy levels, not that the classroom teachers don't, they do, but I think that coupling of subject matter experts and higher ed with our best classroom teachers, I haven't heard you say anything about higher ed, I'm just curious if they've been involved or how you've been involved.
Sure, let me look to my team out here. Math or ELA, have we reached out specifically on the frameworks or the fact that they were involved in the creation of standards?
I have higher ed lined up to go. The problem is, it's kind of, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? This was not, is not being released to the public until we get state board approval. And so it's kind of like, if you approve this format and everything, I'm going to send it to the higher ed, they're going to go through it, make comments, suggestions. That will be our very first update. Like Danielle said, this is a living document. That will be the very first update that will take place before the school year starts. So I have it all lined up, ready to go, but I didn't feel comfortable sending it out before state board has seen it.
And this is Bill, guys, he's one of our math content specialists. So you introduced your apologies.
Oh, sorry.
No.
I just have a comment for the staff. This morning, I did review those and I really feel like it is a great starting point. And as Danielle has said, it's going to be ever-changing because as teachers have input and suggestions, it's going to continue to grow. My only suggestion on the website, you might want to put, if it's a new update, the date that it's updated so that, so that somebody else can make that situation.
And we've tried to do that column, like we put the dates here-
Right, yeah.
And that was actually feedback, thank you. We think that's important as well.
Did that on purpose, we've been dating everything.
I've noticed that on the website so that it has helped me a great deal.
The most robust kind of fun that happens with standards and curriculum is people actually interacting and doing lessons. And that those then become part of interactive work with, among the educators and putting things up and really having some robust dialogue. I like that we're going to have, you'll notice at the top of our whole website, we have parent links. We have, you can go in as a user. And so that's why we have information for parents, information for educators, information for community, that you can easily go in and get what you need. And all the standards and the correlations are available to all of those so that they can always look up a standard, they can always see an example. So do I have a motion to approve the standards resource guides because we are anxious to hit the button to make them active?
Question.
Yes, Brad?
My understanding is they're draft form, you're going to send them out to higher ed. So we're approving them, but then we're going to send them out? Did I misunderstand you, Bill?
No, that's-
He's just wanting to be sure that there are no errors in the-
Correct.
In the higher level. In the higher level mathematics.
They're going to refine them.
I think we need-
Everything gets refined.
Yeah, I understand it's going to be revised and everything's going to be going on. But if we wouldn't approve them now, we're going to have problems later on. And if he would have released them earlier to higher ed before coming here, we'd have been in the same discussion of possible conflicts and whatever. So I agree with the process, I think that we just need to move forward.
I guess-
We would release them not in draft form. Once we release them, they are the form-
Right.
And then we would invite higher ed feedback if there's anything they think that they would suggest we add. Is how I understand the process.
We're being, I want to make sure I'm clear on this, that we're being asked to bring a motion to formally adopt this as in, this is what it's going to be, but we just got done acknowledging it. We're sending it out for additional input. Did I misunderstand that?
So Bill, are you wanting to send it out to higher education before you actually fully release this to the educators?
From talking to teachers, the teachers have given us feedback. This is a living document.
Right.
And if you have changes that you want us to make right now, or we're happy to change it, I've gotten very good feedback from teachers that have helped prepare some of these. Then we're going to, after it goes out, after you guys say, and it's not really approved like an adoption, but it's, yes, this format is good, this is what we want to see in teachers' hands, we're going to make it even better. So this is the starting point. I guess the best way I can describe it is, this is the starting point. We're going to send it out and make it even better by having exactly what you said.
Yeah, we may have-
Take a look at it and give more suggestions on how we can improve it and make it a second, kind of like, this is 1.0, higher ed gets a 2.0. Teachers start giving feedback, we'll do 3.0.
And I don't even, I don't even think it would take new revisions as much as the box and the column of the fourth column would add new-
New websites, new pieces, new resources.
And I like the idea of just marking it so when teachers look at it, they go, "Oh, this was added, this is an additional thing." There's nothing in there that's bad. It's just a matter of, how can we always make it better?
There is, yeah.
If you're asking, did we seek higher ed approval for our resource material answers?
Yes.
I know the-
David?
This is David. I have a question. It's difficult to take care of this, I apologize. But I understand the motion to be is to release the resource guide.
It is.
You're not approving each and every item-
Correct.
In the resource guide, is that correct? So it's for-
Correct.
To release some of it to the-
Correct. 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 We're releasing the documents, that's what we're doing.
We're just releasing it, we haven't gone through each of the materials and said they're appropriate or inappropriate. We're just saying we want more data, we want more people looking at it. And their input's going to come back to spout it and they'll revise it.
No, no, no. We have these ready to go out to educators to be used.
Madam Superintendent? Is there a legal reason why we have to vote to release something?
My point is, we're approving to release the documents, we're not approving the actual documents.
Michelle, you want to speak to this? Because this is a conversation that we've had as to whether we needed an approval process for this at all. I know, David, you made the motion to actually have us approve these, but there's been a lot of dialogue about what that looks like because we're just ready to put out our materials.
Sure. So, if you all recall, at the April 28 meeting, there was a resolution. And in that resolution, it had language about the creation of these documents. Dr. Freitas requested an amendment that would require board approval of the resources. State law doesn't prohibit it, but state law also doesn't require it. So, in terms of the statutes and regulations, it's not required. The resolution that the board adopted asked that the board, the resolution required that the board approve it, granted, that's just a board resolution which the board could choose to-
And that they be released by July 1.
Correct.
Let me make a comment. I just wanted the work done well and I wanted the right input. You have input from a lot of people, you could take these resources and consult higher ed about any time. And so my hope was, Superintendent, that we'd have a timeline, we'd get the appropriate input, we'd have a good work product done. We'd have it in time in advance to look at it. Higher ed's pretty important. You see, a lot of students go on to advanced studies and have trouble. And they're not being retained well and experience a lot of remediation. Many times, it's in mathematics. So, when you do these materials, it's incumbent on the superintendent to get a timeline together, to get the input on time. So we have a work product we have faith in. That was the whole point from the very beginning here. We're not very well organized and we're not on time, we're not thorough. And that's what a board expects. Thank you.
I would say, if I may, Steve, the fact that higher education actually signed off on our standards and gave great amount of input through that process to say, when I receive a student in my freshman math course or I receive a student in my freshman ELA course, this is the content the standards have lacked.
We've already approved the standards.
No. I'm sorry, we have approved the standards and so did the Commission for Higher Education approve the standards. And they're involved-
We're looking at the material, that's all I want to make.
I'm trying to make the point that they approved the content of the standards and these resource materials were built around the content they-
Right. We wanted their input.
With all due respect, I think those are two very different things. And I think if you talk to a subject matter expert, and I won't be surprised when you come back, Bill. I know Cheryl Stumpner for years, she's going to have some great input, I'm glad you're going to send them out. I want to get them released, I know teachers want them. I just, my concern is the general public may misinterpret the board's action as somehow putting a stamp of approval on a final product that in my mind is not a final product.
It's not a final product and then-
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying how it may be interpreted. So it's, I want to make sure how we phrase it in the minutes, that it's clear, we're just releasing it.
So we have a motion to release the standards resource guides. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Elster?
Yes.
Mr. Elster?
Yes.
Dr. Freitas?
Dr. Freitas.
Motion?
The motion is to release the standards resource guides.
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Neal?
Yes.
Dr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Watts?
Yes.
Superintendent Ritz?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries. Next item under discussion and reports is the ESEA waiver update. You have before you a one-sheet paper that actually talks about all of the processes that have happened since we last met. And so I want to reiterate on today's information, speaking of today. We had collaboration call with Damian Beda Benner. And we had a good conversation about the growth calculation options that we'll be moving forward with. And then this last stretch, we are ending our public comment tomorrow at noon. We have to take in consideration that stakeholder input. And then we are doing these items that you see on here. We have four different formats that these have to appear before the U.S. Department of Education. Did you want to speak to any of this, Danielle, briefly, or the paper? Maybe if you've got questions, that might be the best thing. As we finalize the section, we will send them to you. I will reiterate that you have all of the content. So if you have any questions or suggestions or input that you want to give, not only can you do it online, because we put a section on there for state board of ed member, but you can do it through the department. Danielle Shaki will be more than pleased to take your comment and information. So any other comments at this time?
I don't think we've seen the attachments. I don't think we've seen the attachments to Principles 1 or 2 right now.
You are correct. You have, you are correct. They have to be cataloged and in a very specific format and embedded within our document pieces. And so they are not finalized yet to send out to you. Principle 3 was done. And so we sent it out to you as soon as we had it finished. So you'll be receiving those and then you can review if you wish.
And those, just for clarification, the attachments for Principles 1 and 2 will be sent to the Department of Education?
Yes.
In addition to the waiver?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
So, and it's going to be submitted on Thursday?
It's not done yet?
No, it's not done yet. We are still working. In fact, we just got written, we just got written information from the U.S. Department of Ed just not too long ago. So we have to-
Is it the Department of Ed that's holding you up?
Given that we had a call with them on the 17th and they gave us written feedback within a day and that required our team to go, they asked specifically, let's say, around Principle 1 for more evidences and a deeper writing around Principle 1 as late as Thursday. The team wrote all weekend. So yeah, it's an ever-evolving process. And we're not behind.
Dan, we will be submitting this on time.
Remind me when they first notified you we had trouble?
Dan will be submitting this on time.
In 2012, we had this all covered. When did you first get notified that we had trouble and when did you tell the board?
Dan, we're going to be having this submitted on time. So you're asking me-
If you went back, if we go back on timeline, take care of matters, so the board can look at, this is a serious matter. When, excuse me, when were you notified by the U.S. Department of Education that our waiver had serious trouble? Now, in 2012, we had a clean bill of health, everything was fine. When were you notified we had trouble? I think it was like nine out of 18 standards. When did they notify you that?
Dan, you have that information, I can't remember the exact date, May. Do you know?
I think it was in a December date.
May. May 1st is when we received the letter.
When were we first notified? Was it December 13?
Dan.
I believe.
We have been working on this waiver.
If I could finish my point. This is a serious matter, so a person, if you run a department, you put a timeline together, you make sure the board's notified, and you move forward. So these serious matters, because there are matters around, the U.S. Department of Education thankfully cares about accountability in these kind of matters. And so does this board, and so does state statute, and so does the governor. So if you get a notification like that, that's a serious matter, you notify the board. And then in a timely way, you go through and say, these are serious matters, here's what we'll do about it. It's going to be submitted Thursday and we still don't have our work done. That's my point. The board's very disturbed with the lack of organization, leadership, and thoroughness. And transparency and communication. So we have to make the point, so it doesn't ever happen again, because you have us in a very difficult position. It's unacceptable in the professional world, especially when you're talking about K-12 education. Much of the future state economy, social well-being, and cultural well-being depends on us doing a good job here. So it's due Thursday, we don't have the materials. It could have been done.
The report is due Monday, it will be submitted on time. And actually, I want to say a thank you to the state board of ed staff who have been very diligent in working with the Department of Education to be sure that we're getting some very, what I call, complex decisions being made regarding accountability, regarding calculations, regarding a myriad of things that have to be decided in order that we're submitting a waiver that will be acceptable.
We know the staff works hard and we always appreciate it.
So with that, do you have any questions, further questions regarding the work that we have left to do? Because we are committed to having it done and it will be done and it will be as it should. Andrea?
Madam Chair, I have a comment.
Oh, wait just a minute, Tony, after Andrea.
Well, I just feel a need to present a different point of view here. I, in contrast to other board members who want more information, I've been floored by the enormous amount of energy and resource and manpower that's gone into jumping through the federal government's hoops. And I understand that you, Superintendent Ritz, and the governor are fully committed to this waiver, but I also want to point out that a growing number of states, a growing number of congressmen are questioning Arnie Duncan's authority to set the kinds of conditions he appears to be placing on our waiver renewal request, particularly with regard to assessments. In fact, some would argue that Secretary Duncan is violating ESEA by putting the condition that he has tried to place on our plan for assessments. I want to quote from ESEA Section 1111. "The secretary shall not have the authority to require a state, as a condition of approval of the state plan, to include in or delete from such plan one or more specific elements of the state's academic content standards or to use specific academic assessment instruments or items." I personally feel that we have done ourselves a disservice by not questioning the federal government's level of involvement in this. I know I asked at the last meeting, what would happen if we gave up the waiver? And I know I heard the figure that we'd lose flexibility to spend, I think maybe it was $262 million, but it's my belief, from what I have read and my understanding of the law, that the greatest financial consequence we would suffer if we went back to pre-waiver AYP and then failed to comply with the requirements and thus violated ESEA, that the most we could lose would be $2.6 million from Title I money allocated to the IDOE for administrative costs. So perhaps I'm wrong, but I would like personally to see in writing an explanation of why we think we're at risk of losing this bigger sum instead of the $2.6 million in administrative cost that I believe the law would permit.
Madam Superintendent?
Tony's next. Tony?
Okay. Thank you. I view this really as the department's response. And I really don't think that the board has a role here. But that being said, I would at least request, Superintendent, that the department consider not closing the public comment portion until such time as the public has had an opportunity to review all of the attachments for each of the principles.
You understand, I need to talk about what the attachments are. The attachments are evidence of what the department's been doing. That's what it is. It's not, it's not, that's what it is. So, we're not required by the U.S. Department to put out all of the attachments. We're required to put out the substantive amendment writing pieces. And so we've complied with that. The public's had a week, will have had a week to respond to that. We have to finish this up and include public comment within what we do. So waiting until the attachments are ready, which is the final leg of what we must submit, I don't see that that's doable in any way, Tony, with a timeline.
And I was just making the request, but I think really transparency requires that the public be able to view the complete application. But if that's your decision, so be it. Thanks.
Thank you. Gordon?
Madam Superintendent? Just to Tony's point, I think that I would support that myself. I think we've talked a lot about transparency here recently and I think it's important that the public have the opportunity to comment, in addition to the board, on all the materials that are being submitted. I think we all acknowledge that in the attachments, specifically deals with how the department is going to address these very serious issues, that, you know, we've kind of been penalized for, our condition has been put on our waiver. So I think it serves everybody's interest in making sure that we see what the plans are in addressing those concerns that have been raised. And I'd also like to comment on Andrea's comment. And, you know, she's a great colleague and a hard worker and I really appreciate your bringing your point of view. I would disagree though slightly, predictably too, that, you know, I am extremely grateful for the United States Department of Education and everything they do. Secretary Duncan has taken an activist role as Secretary of Education to ensure that the schoolchildren of our country are being lifted up and that the standards that we hold, our schools and our teachers, benefit the schoolchildren of the state. And so I am extremely grateful for not only the funds and the flexibility that we get from our waiver, but I'm extremely grateful for the role that the United States Department of Education plays in helping Indiana schoolchildren move forward and get the best education they can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Seeing, oh, Brad?
Sorry. I did want to make a couple of quick comments, just that as Gordon referenced, this is about transparency. And, you know, one of the things that has concerned me in this is that it's clear from reading USDA summary of phone calls that we've known, the department has known, we as a board have not known, since at least December, there was a condition. And I know people have been working hard over the last 60 days. But going forward, one of the things I think we have got to do a better job on is really appreciating the role of the board working in collaboration with the department to work on behalf of students. At the end of the day, if we lose this waiver, we're going to lose the flexibility, the very flexibility that is allowing Title I intervention teachers into classrooms right now, rather than those monies being set aside for school choice and staff development and everything else that's in the prescriptive set-asides. And I don't think it's coincidence that when we got the waiver, which, you know, a lot of people misunderstand this, the waiver is actually the ability of our state to assert our accountability model and get the federal government out of the decision-making locally. And that waiver allows us locally to make some decisions on how to spend those federal dollars. And I don't think it's coincidence that when you look at the trend line, that the trend line starts going up significantly at the same time that we started getting the waiver and we started getting more control over how to spend those dollars. And so this does matter, does affect students. As I go through and I went through and looked at some of the concerns, I would just say this. I would be very careful in the last final version, because I don't think we're going to see it, that it's not promising more things, but it truly is delivering on the evidence of what it is we're doing. The thing that I keep hearing people talk about is, well, we knew we had to amend it, we knew we had to amend it. Well, yeah, we knew we had to amend it the day we decided we were going to back out of park and we weren't going to do Common Core. That's a given. But I don't hear people talking about the fact that nine of 18 areas were non-compliant. And I don't hear anybody talking about the fact that at a special meeting of the board, it became very clear there were a lot of key systems not being implemented yet and not being monitored. And I think as we go forward, you know, I know we have to trust the department and I take your word when you say, trust us, we're going to do it. We have to trust you. But these are the things that are going to impact our ability to keep putting intervention teachers in front of kids and do other things that are helping make a difference academically. So I went through, I made some notes. I will go to the public website and put my information out there as well. But I would just say, in a read-through of it, it still very much reads like a draft. And we're this close to the submission deadline. And as somebody who used to write Title I grants for living, I would be a little nervous. I don't know why we didn't start sooner on this, given that I now have been made aware through USDA summary calls that the technical assistance was being offered as early as December. I don't know why there wasn't a greater sense of urgency. I'll leave that up for people smarter than me to figure that out in the end analysis. But I do hope we get our waiver extended. It would be absolutely a shame if Indiana went from being on top of this situation and excelling and being an exemplar to losing the waiver.
Dan?
I wouldn't go so far as my esteemed colleague Gordon to say, I like everything the U.S. Department of Education does. They do a lot of stuff. But I would say, irregardless of their involvement, what they've brought to us are commitments that the legislature and this board have made, Andrea, on around accountability and ensuring if children go to school in this state, that we know what's happening in that school. school, and that if it needs a lot of attention, that it gets it, that we don't autopilot and paper over it. So those were bold moves made over the years through, I think visionary leadership five or six years ago, that the adults, professionals involved, take their profession very seriously. So what the U.S. Department of Education really did was to put out a red light for us on our own commitments, they were our commitments. And they're telling you, don't send mixed message about accountability, measure, have people accountable for students' learning, and the U.S. Department of Education is concerned that we're moving away from that. So that's a serious matter, so in a way, they've done us a favor, but it's about our own values and core commitments as a profession. So I really can't blame them of just bringing the bad news to us, I just want to take care of it.
Seeing no other business to come before us, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So do we.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.